Thank you to all. It's Friday. That's what.
And you are way ahead.
Occasionally. Nadia. Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular session this evening. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Randolph.
Here.
Alderwoman Jones.
Here.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Here.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silent prayer as we pray for our military members as well as our public safety members.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You may be seated. The next item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda as printed and presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So tonight's agenda has been approved. The next item is the approval of the minutes from April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that we accept the minutes from the regular session, April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five have been approved. Is there a motion for the appointments to the various boards and commissions?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a make a motion that we appoint Michelle Green to the Historical Preservation Commission to a term that will expire on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, as well as Alderwoman Annette Turnbaugh to a term that expires on, on, I'm sorry, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, and then Alderman or Alderwoman Annette Turnbaugh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-eight, as well as Alderwoman Annette Turnbaugh to the Construction Code of Appeals Board that would expire on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I second.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will do those appointments tonight. Ms. Michelle is here, so we can swear her in, and we will meet you down here at the podium.
Will you both raise your right hands? And once I get done, will you say, "I will"? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri and the provisions of all the laws of this state affecting cities of the fourth class and the ordinances of this city, faithfully discharge all duties pertaining to your office, and faithfully demean yourself in the office to which you have been appointed? So help you God.
I will.
So for you and the audience, Alderwoman Turnbaugh is replacing Alderman Hartman on those different commissions. So we are moving them around a little swam, right? The next item on the agenda is a proclamation, and this is dealing with, let's go with public works professionals, and we've got both Doug here and Athena here. So why don't you both come on up? Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. And thank you for all you guys do as well. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of the city of Grandview. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens of Grandview. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Grandview to gain knowledge and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Leonard D. Jones, Jr., Mayor of the City of Grandview, Missouri, on behalf of the Outstanding Board of Aldermen and the citizens of Grandview, do hereby designate the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Work Week. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Signed, in the City of Grandview, Missouri, the thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five, Leonard Jones, Mayor, attested by Melissa Pace. Thank you. Absolutely. Any comments for the board? I'd shake your hands as well.
Uh, just, well, we'd particularly appreciate, uh, the guys out in the field that, uh, get all the work done, uh, parents, snowblading in the winter, fixing the streets in the summer, uh, maybe shooting sewer down the, uh, folks with the walkers or with the water. So basically, if we're doing our job right, we should go and, uh, just keep that as, uh, as our reference, um, uh, being, being.
Well, let's give them a round of applause. Once again, thank you to the public works professionals and for all that you do. As our next proclamation is, uh, Jamal, why don't you come on up here?
Yeah.
This is, whereas the National League of Cities was founded in nineteen twenty-four in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leaders, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than nineteen thousand cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with forty-nine state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislation solutions that support municipalities, has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas Grandview is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. And whereas Grandview has first incorporated in nineteen twelve and is proudly served today by Grandview Mayor Leonard Jones, Alderman Damon Randolph, Sandra Jones, Annette Turnbaugh, Iris Kendrick, John Maloney, and Thomas Rousey, with a dedicated staff of public servants. Now therefore, I, Leonard D. Jones, Jr., the Mayor of the City of Grandview, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Signed, in the City of Grandview, Missouri, this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five. Leonard Jones, Mayor, and Melissa Pace. And again, it is now seven eleven, and the next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone who would like to address the Board of Aldermen? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and sign in with our city clerk, Ms. Melissa Pace. And you have three minutes to address the Board of Aldermen. Now at seven twelve, I declare public comment open. Absolutely.
Okay. There we go. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the board. My name is Liz Ogul. Uh, I live at six eight zero one East One Hundred and Fortyth Terrace. Uh, while I'm a resident here in Grandview, I'm here today as the President of the Grandview Chamber of Commerce to speak on behalf of our local business community. Uh, recently, we've had several, uh, owners of our local convenience stores, most of whom have been valued members of our business community for many years, reach out to us about their experience doing business in our community. They consistently express their positive experience operating within Grandview, appreciating the community and all the growth and investments the city has put in over the years. Several of them, uh, are right along the Main Street corridor, uh, and have felt the positive impacts, uh, of all the updates that you guys have done over the years. A consistent challenge highlighted by local convenience store owners is staffing, which, as we're all aware, is not unique to just Grandview, as businesses across the nation struggle with this. However, our local businesses face a significantly limited pool of potential job candidates due to the cumbersome licensing process required for alcohol sales. This limitation creates difficulties in staffing their stores effectively, particularly when needing to bring employees from other locations, uh, to assist with coverage. Several of these Grandview businesses, uh, also operate locations in neighboring cities like Kansas City and Lee's Summit, where individual employee liquor licenses are not required. Uh, this difference in regulation, along with the fact that the State of Missouri doesn't mandate this at the individual employee level, highlights the unique challenge, challenges faced by businesses specifically operating within Grandview. Uh, we believe that revisiting this ordinance could significantly benefit our local businesses, streamline their operations, and potentially expand employment opportunities within Grandview, all without compromising responsible alcohol sales. We respectfully request the board consider reviewing and updating this ordinance to align with practices in other similar cities and the state regulations while still upholding our commitment to public safety. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Not seeing anyone else. I guess Liz did a great job, so I declare a public comment at, closed at seven fourteen. There's no public hearing tonight. Consent items are E through H. Is there a motion to approve consent items E through H?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion to approve consent items E through H.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It has been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So consent items E through H have been approved. The next area is ordinances. Is there a motion for Bill number seven eight four zero?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
Move that Bill seven eight four zero be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four zero, an ordinance amending section thirty-one dash twenty-six D three of the Grandview Code of Laws to extend the expiration period for signed permits.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Um, Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that Bill number seven eight four zero be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four zero, an ordinance amending section thirty-one dash twenty-six D three of the Grandview Code of Laws to extend the expiration period for signed permits.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
We don't need it on this one, sir.
I, I do this time because I've got a nay vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Motion for final reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that Bill number seven eight four zero be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry. Bill number seven eight four zero, an ordinance amending section thirty-one dash twenty-six D three of the Grandview Code of Laws to extend the expiration period for signed permits. Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Ordinance number seven five seven eight.
So Bill number seven eight four zero has passed, and it's now ordinance seven five seven eight. And those of you in the audience, the only reason we did a, a roll call on the second reading is because there was a nay vote, and we want to identify how everybody voted. So just to give you some information, okay? Typically, we don't, if there's, if everybody's in favor, we move on. Is there a motion for Bill number seven eight four one?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, uh, Maloney, in this case.
Move that Bill number seventy eight forty-one be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four one, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Legacy Underground Construction for the twenty twenty-five storm sewer repairs at six five zero four East One Hundred and Twenty-Ninth Street, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that Bill number seven eight four one be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four one, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Legacy Underground Construction for the twenty twenty-five storm sewer repairs at six five zero four East One Hundred and Twenty-Ninth Street, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that Bill number seventy eight forty-one be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman, Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven five seven nine.
So Bill number seven eight four one has passed, is now ordinance seven five seven nine. Is there a motion on Bill number seven eight four two?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I move that Bill seven eight four two be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four two, an ordinance authorizing a contract with J.M. Fahey Construction Company for the Blue Ridge Boulevard from Third Street to West City Limit Project, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I move that, uh, Bill number seven eight four two be placed on second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four two, an ordinance authorizing a contract with J.M. Fahey Construction Company for the Blue Ridge Boulevard from Third Street to West City Limit Project, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that Bill number seven eight four two be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven five eight zero.
So Bill number seven eight four two has passed, is now ordinance seven five eight zero. Is there a motion on Bill number seven eight four three?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I move that Bill number seven eight four three be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Cook, Flat, and Strobel Engineers, CFS, for construction services for the Blue Ridge Boulevard from Third Street to West City Limit Project, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that Bill number seventy eight forty-three be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Cook, Flat, and Strobel Engineers, CFS, for the construction services for the Blue Ridge Boulevard from Third Street to West City Limit Project, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I move that Bill seven eight four three be placed on its final passage and that said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven five eight one.
So Bill number seven eight four three has passed, is now ordinance seven five eight one. Is there a motion on Bill number seven eight four four?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I move that we put Bill seven eight four four on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven eight four four, an ordinance adding Article eleven of Chapter ten of the Grandview Code of Laws to regulate short-term rentals.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
First, I'd like to thank staff. I have several questions about, uh, the taxation part of things. Since we passed this in two thousand and eleven, I just wanted to kind of make sure all the wording was correct, that we could fold this into our existing taxation, since Airbnb's and such really weren't popular in this area at the time, so they have to have the certain terminology and different things, so they really dove in, and I very much appreciate the, the, the work that Randy and Carrie did, uh, and Jamal, just to make sure everything, uh, was fine when it comes to that. I did have a couple more questions I was just curious about here. Did you reach out to Airbnb staff? They reached out to us. So I was, I was just curious about that.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, yes, I also received communication this week from Airbnb, Airbnb staff, uh, prior to drafting this legislation, uh, we had, uh, reached out to them, uh, they provided us with some kind of best practices for local municipalities, and then again, uh, the communication that I received this week from them as well.
Gotcha. The one thing, so I sent them the, the proposed ordinance that we were going to do tonight, and they had one kind of caveat or suggestion. It was not limiting, and if I understand this correctly, we're only allowing short-term rentals in residential areas only. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what is Main Street considered? Like, if there was a loft apartment on Main Street on the second floor?
Uh, Main Street is owned as a, uh, the majority of it is designated as commercial.
So that's kind of what their thought process was, if we would widen it to include, um, commercial spaces, because a lot of the times, which I've, I've done myself in different cities, have stayed in a mixed-use building where's an apartment above a storefront down there, and everything was in walkable distance, there was restaurants, there were different things, so, um, but we wouldn't allow that at this point. We're only doing it residential neighborhoods, uh, the way the, the ordinance is written right now. So they were saying maybe if we weren't so restrictive of only stating residential uses, that it might open up to different, uh, you know, properties that might want to, you know, take advantage of it there. And they also, of course, they, they didn't see a problem with any multifamily units, or, um, they said it's popular for some cities to put a regulation on saying if you have an apartment complex, say with twenty units, no more than five of them can be, you know, uh, used for short-term rentals, um, you know, so that was one suggestion that they, they kind of put out there, which is fine. I did have a question about, I know we have four plexes in Grandview, which I think we say can only be in duplexes, right? Is a fourplex considered multifamily?
It is, yes.
Okay, so.
And so the way we drafted it right now, again, it would only be allowed for single-family and/or duplexes.
Okay. The, um, just to me, there's not a big difference, to me, there's a difference between an apartment To me, there's a difference between an apartment complex and like a fourplex or duplex. To me, it's in the same thing. So saying one property owner can't do it because our duplex is right next to fourplexes, saying you can do it, but you can't do it in the same residential area, I think can be problematic, you know, when it comes to that. So that's just, you know, kind of my personal opinion on that one. When it comes to the database, the chief of police asked last time if their staff is going to be able to see the registration process. And you said that we use a GovBid? No, it's not Gov.
GovBuild.
GovBuild currently right now. Is that the same database that we're going to use for this short-term registration?
At this time, yes.
Yes. Do they, does the police department have access to that?
I'm not a hundred percent certain if they have direct access to that. But any information that they were needing as relates to any of the required information that we have within this proposed legislation, as relates to owners of record, point of contact, we would be more than happy to share that information with them.
Okay.
And Alderman Maloney, we were happy to share that database access to police department. There's nothing confidential in it and we own the software.
Sure. Because I think the example, the popular example has been a house party where they've been called to complain and they're trying to get hold of the property owner. So this would be in the nights and weekends, you know, type of timeframe when, you know, they might not be able to get ahold of someone from your office. I just wanted, you know, to have that access. Because that would be useful, I guess, with our regular rental registration process. At best guess, you said there's about a hundred maybe or so units?
That is correct.
Percentage-wise of our housing stock that I guess would be residential and not multifamily? What percentage of that would that, is that five percent, twenty percent?
I don't know that specific number. I can provide that to you, though.
Okay.
Mayor.
Well, anything else?
I had a couple more here. I was just kind of curious. So we have a rental registration process and we've got two full-time people and maybe a quarter to half-time of a different employee, right? And.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So when it comes to staff breakdown of the, I would just say rental registration process as a whole, this is going to get kind of encompassed into it, right? So whether it's a long-term or short-term rental registration process.
Correct. We have currently two full-time rental inspectors that would be taking this on in addition to their existing duties.
Gotcha.
And I believe we are, you know, adequately staffed to be able to handle that.
Gotcha. I would hope so, because if it's only a little bit, because I guess we have three when it comes to community development or when it comes to neighborhood resources, right?
That is correct.
And they're in charge of all houses, commercial, residential? It seems like we're very disproportionately staffed, I suppose, in this. And to me, this is kind of a difficult priority with our staffing to go after this. What's the expected income that we might see from this if we have a hundred?
Um, it's, you know, somewhat hard to say, particularly as it relates to the taxation. A lot of it will depend on the number of nights that the units are rented. So again, our estimate, what we are proposing for the annual registration and annual inspection would be a hundred fifty dollars per unit. So a hundred dollars for the annual registration and then fifty dollars for the annual inspection.
Gotcha. And then it's five percent each night?
That is correct.
Gotcha. So when it comes to the enforcement, you have a house that is registered, they've paid it, but then you've noticed they've never paid anything throughout the year. Who will enforce, like following up with them and saying, have you had any rentals? Because if they're not going through Airbnb, but they're still renting it out. I understand that Airbnb or VRBO might collect those funds for us, but that wouldn't cover all databases. So I was just kind of wondering who's in charge of the enforcement? Is that finance department? Is that the rental registration department? Is that the licensing department with the clerk? Or where in that kind of tripod?
So it would be cross-department where we would be working with our finance department as well. If we are aware of a unit that is being listed on any of these platforms and those funds are not being collected, if we are clearly aware that it is being rented nightly, that is something that we would try to work with our finance department to recuperate the funds that would be owed to the city for those nights stayed.
But we don't have a clear process yet about who's going to contact and wrangle those funds up?
Not yet, no.
Okay. The last couple of questions, when it comes to just educational process, how do we go about, how do you foresee going about educating the public and current property owners about this process? And I guess voluntary compliance or involuntary compliance, you know, of it? How do we foresee the education process of this? Are we going to outsource it to a company?
No, I think we have an internal communications department that we will work with to try to help get information out, particularly if this body decides to move forward with passing this legislation. We will work with our communications director and their staff to help educate and inform the community about this as well.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Randy, hang on just a sec. I'm a little bit confused, kind of getting back up to speed. Are we talking Airbnb? Because I know we have on Main Street above the Guckert Building, there are some apartments and I think they're kind of longtime renters of the property owner. And over on Fifth Street off of, I believe it's Dewey, there's a fourplex over there. And so these that have been existing, is there going to be any grandfathering in? Are they even involved? Because they're not the Airbnb types that are rolling over. These are just renters living in apartments. Because there is a fourplex over on Dewey, you know, Fifth Street and Dewey then going to the west, as well as the Guckert Building. And I know he's got a couple of apartments above that that were, you know, rebuilt after the fire of the Guckert Building.
So we have an existing program for rental properties.
Okay.
Those that are rented for thirty days or more.
Okay.
What is before you today is specifically for what is referred to as short-term rentals. Those that are for a period of thirty days or less.
Gotcha. Okay. I just wanted, yeah.
Yeah, those are all long-term.
They're going to be, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Choice to be long-term.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? You know, Randy, I want to say to you and staff and Carrie, thank you guys for all the legwork. You know, I too was contacting along with everybody else. And I had a chance to talk to some of the other mayors and, you know, this is a good first step. And other cities are doing, that have not done it yet are looking at this. And Jamal, they're going to be contacting you because they want to get a copy of where we are and, you know, where we're going. So I think that's a good thing. So.
Happy to help. And I wanted to answer Alderman Maloney's question about the percentages. That's less than two percent. So your question was in our housing stack. We have total of about twelve thousand units. Little over half are single-family housing. And if you look at a hundred units, that's a little less than two percent.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just clarification.
Yep.
I guess to my point, I guess that kind of skews the employee to like unit ratio to me. When you have three employees who are in charge of the entire city when it comes to code enforcement of neighborhood standards and such, and then we have two full-time people to two percent and just rental registration upon turnover. So it's not even an annual thing. I just think that my neighbors want their neighborhood looking better. And I think those people could use more help in that enforcement.
Sure. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ra- Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I move that bill seven, eight, four, four be placed on a second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven, eight, four, four, in ordinance adding Article eleven of Chapter ten of the Grandview Code of Laws to regulate short-term rentals.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number seven, eight, four, four be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven, five, eight, two.
So bill number seven, eight, four, four has passed is now ordinance seven, five, eight, two. Is there a motion for bill number seven, eight, four, five?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that we put bill seven, eight, four, five on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven, eight, four, five, in ordinance amending Chapter two of the Code of Laws of the City of Grandview, Missouri regarding mayor and board of aldermen.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number seven, eight, forty-five be placed on second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number seven, eight, four, five, in ordinance amending Chapter two of the Code of Laws of the City of Grandview, Missouri regarding mayor and board of aldermen.
Any further discussion? I just want to take a moment to thank Carrie and Melissa for all your hard work. You guys have been great and helped us out tremendously. And, you know, thank you for just helping clean this process up. So we really do appreciate it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I move that bill seven, eight, four, five be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Jones.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number seven, five, eight, three.
Bill number seven, eight, four, five has passed is now ordinance seven, five, eight, three. And now we're going to go to other business. And Liz, thank you very much for coming up. Thank you guys as owners for coming up and so forth. We will be taking this item up as one of our work session items. And thank you for, you know, again, it's nice to see input that we can find out what other communities are doing. So you guys have been helpful and we will, Jamal already has it on the list of items that we're going to have in a work session. And you're more than welcome to attend that as well. So we appreciate you guys. And also, I want to say personally, thank you for being sponsors for the State of the City address. So we really do appreciate you guys. You know, it's been a blessing and continue to give us feedback. So we know exactly where we should be looking at and where we go from there. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Other business, let's start with Alderman Randolph. Let's start with you. Other business.
Oh, sure. Yeah. So a couple of resident calls. One from a resident who lives on Byers Road was concerned about the speed of traffic. You know, that's twenty-five miles an hour. You know, he estimated people are doing sixty. But as someone who lives two blocks from him, I see people zoom past the stop sign on one hundred and twenty-ninth and Byers Road constantly multiple times a day. People almost run into the back of me when I'm trying to turn into my driveway, even though I turn my blinker on a block ahead of time. So. It used to be a little bit more enforcement. I mean, I know they used to sit on one hundred and twenty-eighth and light people up and that's kind of been missing. So I know, you know, Charlie doesn't publicize when they do that, but definitely would like to see that. And our resident knows Charlie. So he was like, he really wanted to pass that message on. So I'll share the name with you. I just didn't know if he wanted to be public. And then I got another email that I'll also forward you. Over on one hundred and twenty-seven Applewood Drive, there are a couple of abandoned unfinished houses. Apparently, I guess somebody that bought them and was renovating them and they've been abandoned. And the resident lives next door and he says that the city's been mowing both lots in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. And so. I would definitely share with you, but yeah, I just wanted to get it out there. Yeah, I told him that's probably community development. But, and he was interested in potentially trying to buy the houses. But he says it's a comfortable process. So he wants to try to navigate that. So.
Okay. If you forward it.
Yeah, the bill in your inbox.
We'll connect.
Awesome.
Alderman Maloney?
Yeah, one, a couple of things here. The, with the passing of Senator and/or Governor Bond, if we could make sure our flags are lowered to half staff if they haven't been already in all the stations.
Half staff.
But the half staff.
Of Kit Bond.
But it was, I was reading kind of a quick synopsis and I have always heard of Kit Bond, but I didn't realize that he was instrumental in starting parents as teachers. And with kids that have parents or going through parents as teachers, I thought that was such a great thing to know that not only did come out of Missouri and then as a national thing, it's just another thing to be proud of. And it's one of those things that has, it happened long ago to where it's just routine now. But sometimes it's always fun to learn where things come from. It's always good to see that Missouri was delivering.
He used to spend a lot of time in Grandview too, John. He was down at the advocate office a lot.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So he was visible. He was very visible.
The, I did have a question about the ordinance with the short-term rentals here. I don't mind that I lost by any means. You know, I voiced my opinion. I am kind of curious how it kind of came up. Last time we met as a board and discussed short-term rentals was in December. And the board asked staff to go talk with Mark in MML and come back. And instead, they just came back with an ordinance and it was, it's a pass fail. So I'm just kind of curious how we went from asking for more information to an ordinance being presented to us. So.
Excellent question. A week ago, we had a work session to discuss our findings. And if you recall, that was a long, lengthy and very comprehensive conversation.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Work session, we have discussed this.
Last, last week's work session?
That is correct.
I mean, it was, well, it was the discussion of the ordinance that you were, that was drafted and presented to us.
Yeah.
So I guess was who authorized staff to focus their efforts on it? Because it wasn't the board. I guess is my overarching point was this was not a priority of community development. They went through the budget process and nor did the board make it a priority as a consensus. It was just presented to us and now we have to vote on it one way or the other. We weren't part of drafting it or directing staff's time. That's, I guess, my concern. This happened with the trash and now it's happened with this. So I'm just curious. We haven't had the board consensus of presenting this. So this, I guess it's more of a comment.
Okay.
But anything else? But it's noticed.
So anything else?
No.
Let's go back to Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Just had some, a few phone calls. I've been working with Athena and Doug on a drainage problem and they've been just Johnny on the spot. We appreciate that. Hopefully, the bear won't find, won't find the spots that we've cleaned up, Doug and Athena, to run up what's been cleaned up now and hide in the, in the deal. But so, so far, so good. No, no, and staff, thank you. Again, Doug and Athena, thank you guys very much. It meant a lot to that neighbor. Of course, the bear was in her neighborhood this morning. So she was also texting me about where's the bear?
Absolutely.
I said he may be running up the pipe behind us.
I just wanted to say that the VFW is having their fish fry this Friday.
Yep, thank you.
From eleven to?
Eleven to three.
Three. Fish fry at the VFW eighty-one hundred.
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars.
Spaghetti or fish? Yes, for those of us that don't eat fish.
Sounds good. Thank you. Alderman Rousey.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Okay. And Alderwoman Jones?
I just want to echo the comments about speeding on Byers Road. That's been a subject for me for quite a while and just can't emphasize that enough. Being right there on that street, we see the traffic as well as the pedestrians. And I really worry with the speed of the vehicles coming through there. So any attention that can be given to that is greatly appreciated.
We'll make sure that there is attention, but at the same time, what I'm hearing is that we shouldn't have fixed Byers. Now, it's fixed. It's even flatter and it's straight shot.
Well, actually, actually, he was also concerned that that part of Byers had not been fixed yet. So I explained to him what had happened on, you know, south of High Grove and how it's a whole system and things like that. So.
We'll mention this to our police chief and our traffic unit to pay attention to that corner.
And just FYI, you know, we had a great meeting about, Liz, I think you were there, for action items for Harry haydays and so forth. And a lot of good feedback was given. And we're going to continue to take the feedback and make it even better as we continue to move forward. So that is good news. I've asked Jamal to prepare us to look at for the civic leader for two thousand and twenty-five. So we'll be having those discussions forthcoming here pretty, pretty soon. There is a civic leadership meeting that we'll have for all of Westgate. And that's going to be October, I think, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, somewhere in there. So that will be forthcoming. So we'll be ready and prepared for that to occur. So.[1657.61]